Everyone, we'll begin the Joint Meeting for Rules and Open Government Committee, and Committee of the Whole, for Wednesday, August 21st. We have a quorum, Presidents Councilmember Camus, Councilmember Davis, and Vice Mayor Jones. We'll begin with a review of the final agenda for August 27th, which appears to be mercifully short. I'll note that there are two items on the amended agenda to be added for excused absences. And we'll begin on pages four and five. Are there any changes to the printed agenda? Pages six and seven, I think we need a sunshine waiver on items 2.8 and 2.9 regarding boards and commissions appointments and peer review of the city auditor's office. And then pages eight and nine, any changes? Okay. Pages 10 and 11, I think we need a sunshine waiver on item 3.4, which is the Federated Public Member Appointment.
Just to note, there's three people to interview.
Okay.
Can we do that at a time certain for them?
This is a very short meeting. I don't think there's going to be probably much need for it.
Okay.
I think.
I agree.
Yeah, okay. Then pages 12 and 13.
Gotcha.
They allowed deferrals.
Yes.
And then finally, page 14, any changes? So apparently, the Vice Mayor Jones rule is being invoked to move the 10.1 item to the afternoon.
The doctrine.
The doctrine, thank you. Because that means it survives after your death. Yeah. The Jones doctrine. Thank you.
Move approval for the Tuesday, August 27th, meeting with a sunshine waiver for 2.8, 2.9, 3.4, and the ad sheet.
All right. There are no cards from the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. We have no meeting the following week because of the holiday. So we'll move on to the public record.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's no members of the public who'd like to speak. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're on to item G1, which is the consent calendar.
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
I'll just note that I did actually attend the night market in Northside. I was really impressed by what the community made happen, in a really wonderful way. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're going on to item two, which is hate crime prevention. Is anyone from Councilmember -- oh, Councilmember Jimenez is here. I don't have to ask if anyone from his office is here. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd actually like to defer the item.
Okay.
There's a similar memo that's going to be submitted to rules tomorrow. I think it would make sense to hear both of those items together.
Councilwoman Jimenez.
I haven't had a chance to review the other item. I got a copy of it just a few minutes ago. I would really appreciate the fact that if this has a chance to be heard, and at the end of having discussion, if you all feel that it warrants deferment, then...
Why don't we do this? The other item, I just got notification of this other memo, I think, I don't know, 20 or 30 minutes ago. Why don't we move forward on this, and we can marry the two up, I would assume, at some point, at an appropriate time when it gets to the relevant council committee? Does that make sense?
I can work with that marriage.
Okay. Okay, great.
Meanable.
Councilman Jimenez, would you like to describe your proposal?
Yeah, thank you. I think a few things about my memo. I think, one, that I think it's timely, and I think, the little that I've seen of the other memo we'll be discussing at some other point, I think it's sort of, I think it's a good marriage. So it's timely, and I think appropriate. I, at the expense of saying a little controversial, I know recently with some of the more recent shootings that have taken place, especially in El Paso, Texas, some of the presidential candidates, especially Beto O'Rourke, has commented that he feels that the President of the United States is at least responsible for providing an environment in which views like this, of hatred towards other races, xenophobia, things of that nature, have allowed to persist in this country, and I really, truly believe that, that our President unfortunately has perpetuated and given the space for this type of behavior. As many of you know, I was present, and certainly my heart goes out to the families of lost family members at the Gilroy shooting, including Councilmember Esparza. I was unfortunate enough to be there that day and heard the gunshots that I'm sure took the lives of some of these people. I was there with my family. We were walking in that direction, and we were about to run, like many other people did. Likewise, I was born in Ciudad Juarez, which is right across the border from El Paso, Texas. And so, when that shooting took place, it seems apparent to me that the shooter drove several hundred miles to purposely target Mexican-American families. What came to mind is my family members that live there in El Paso. And so immediately, we reached out to people to make sure people were safe, and thank God they were. And so, it's under these circumstances, in these situations, unfortunate situations, in the current state of our country, that I think is imperative that we do everything possible to get all the information, to try to figure out what's happening here in our own city and in our own county. And so that's why the memo that I put out, as you can tell, it's two pages, if that, and it's very just straightforward. The first recommendation is really to bring, to direct the city manager along with the police department, or any other related department, to really bring forward statistics related to hate crimes in San Jose over the last five years. And that's recommendation A. And as you probably asked yourself, because I've been asked this already, why wouldn't we send that just directly to Public Safety Committee? Which makes sense. I'm the vice chair of the committee. The reason I put the full city council, and I have it underlined here, is that I really do think that, or before I say that, I think we all acknowledge that some of these committee hearings, especially Public Safety, Neighborhood Services, aren't always well-attended. It's the middle of the day, when many people can't be present. And so for me, I thought it was important to have this very important conversation and dialogue around statistics and what we're doing in the future, at a time when more residents are allowed to come forward and share their story and concern. And so that's the reason I said in front of the full city council as opposed to committee. B, also, quite frankly, it anticipated some movement by the county, and so that's why I think it's even more relevant as to some of the, I think the memo that I just recently took a quick glance at. It says, "Initiate conversations with the County of Santa Clara and support any efforts, including a task force, to address ongoing safety concerns and prevent acts of violence motivated by racism, white nationalism, xenophobia, and hate." And so, I anticipated that the county, and I believe you might have had some conversations with some folks at the county mayor, that some of this work, as it relates to task force and such, might have been coming down the pipeline. And so, my memo simply was trying to open the door to those conversations, and to express to the community and to the county that we were willing to have those conversations, and we equally believe that they're important. And so, that's the gist of my memo. I hope that it moves forward, or is married to another memo that I have yet to review. I think it's important. I think it's timely, and I really hope that you support it.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I believe, Lee, we've got a green light from staff, is that right?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So, happy to support, let me just offer, I know that there was an announcement, I guess today, and now a memo about what could happen in collaboration with the County of Santa Clara. I think it would be probably fruitful to see that community process get underway and identify some action items that we can then bring back to council that are concrete, and that might be an appropriate time when we talk about all this together. But we can sort of sort that out. In the meantime, I'm happy to support it. My colleagues, Councilmember Davis?
Yeah. I just want to thank you, Councilmember Jimenez, for making sure that these data come front and center for us, so that we can have that discussion. You know how I like data, so I really appreciate bringing this. And I'm not on PISPIS, so it's a report that I wouldn't normally see, so I think it's an appropriate time for that to come to the full council for a discussion. So I'd like to move approval of Sergio's memo.
Second.
Councilman Camus?
Yeah, and I'm in wholehearted agreement. But I do want to ask you this. I've been seeing a rise in violence against police as well, and I'm hoping that we could, I don't know if it belongs together, but I'm, you know, we've had six police officers shot in Philadelphia, we've had several police officers shot here and there, and I'm concerned that, I'm concerned about that as well, that a lot of our law enforcement are being seen in a light that they shouldn't be seen in. And so, I don't know if that could be added to the discussion, but I certainly want to know, you know, if the attitudes are, there's a lot of attitudes that are kind of getting really, really divided, and nobody seems to be open to listening to other people. And as far as dialogue is concerned, I'd love to know what's happening as far as if there's been a rise in violence against police officers as well, if that could be included in any way.
If I could suggest, I think that is a very important subject to discuss. I think it's probably a separate subject that would need its own, really, to go deep in that space, a really different discussion.
I was mainly looking for statistics, but, I mean, I didn't feel like doing a memo on just that subject.
Yeah. Councilman Jimenez?
Thank you, Mayor. I completely agree that that's a completely different topic. I want to say thank you to Councilmember Jimenez for bringing this forward. I think we're, you know, great minds think alike, because we will have a marriage soon between our memos. And, you know, I just really look forward to having a space where we can have this conversation, bring in the community, bring in the service providers, and fold in some of those lessons and best practices into our everyday life, and in how we consider, how we vote upon the dais. And so I look forward to that, and it's very unfortunate that you and your family were there and witnessed to that. My son, you know, was very shocked, and he has also asked me, like, why do people hate us so much? And so how do you answer that question for, you know, a kid? It's not hard. It's very difficult, and so I applaud you for bringing this forward to us, and look forward to partnering up.
Okay. All right. We just got a card, oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Jones?
I'm completely supportive of this as well, but I just had a question. Some of these hate groups are local, homegrown. Are there other hate groups that are regional or national? So was there any discussion in terms of involving the federal government, the FBI, in this process, and having that conversation and dialogue and coordination with the federal government, knowing who our commander in chief is?
You know, I can tell you, before I submitted this memo, I had a conversation with the chief of police here in the city of San Jose, and he's informed me that there's active conversations taking place, and they're certainly taking precautions and such. So I would expect that when this comes forward, whether it's married or not to the other recommendation, that when the police department comes forward, they can shed some light on that. I certainly know that this doesn't happen in a bubble. And I was going to make a comment, and I think I'll just make it here. I was going to ask if I could say, because I think it's relevant to what you're saying, is that I think, you know, by watching the news media, we often think, I get the sense that some people think that these issues are far away in another state, another part of the world. But I can tell you, based on some of the emails I get, that these issues are very much alive and well, and that there's an undercurrent in our society that really, where a lot of this is festering. And so, to the extent the FBI or anyone can shed some light on it, I'm totally supportive of that. But it's not, you know, as you can tell from the memo, it wasn't meant to be, I mean, I try to be as broad as possible to give both the city administration, as well as the police department, enough leeway to bring back information, so that way we didn't limit it to any certain thing. So I expect that that would be part of it.
I think, if I could just add, I know that our intel unit is in constant communication with federal law enforcement about these and related issues. I'm guessing the federal law enforcement won't be that eager to participate in a public way like our police department might, so we may rely on them quite a bit to funnel that information, I'm guessing. We just got a card submitted by someone who did not put their name, but it was on this item. It's the only card submitted, so come on up, sir. It was on this, yeah, please come on up. If you could squeeze that handle right underneath the mic, that'll help you raise. If you just put your hand down a little on the pole, there you go, and squeeze it, then you can push it up. There you go.
Okay, there you go.
Perfect.
So, hate, I don't know anything about it. I mean, I just know people. But I'm a business owner here in the San Jose area, and I've heard of some of the talk about hate. I don't actually see it in my world. I mean, I'm Native American and Hispanic and pretty much all kinds of other things. So are my kids. And I've talked to my employees about it all the time. We don't see it, but we do see violence. So not based on anything in particular, we see a lot of violence. And really, I noticed an uptick in the violence, actually, probably about when you first came into office and pretty much decimated the police force, and everybody left. And then, now I see that they're getting their hands tied for use of deadly force. It's something I don't really understand, because, see, I'm out every day, and I see what's happening in the world. I mean, I see the homeless people, I'm a pro, it was actually, some of my employees were just attacked by a homeless person. We will call the police department about stuff like that. It'll take them 45 minutes to respond, and this is right downtown. And they don't do anything about it. They don't pull them away. These are drug addicts, mentally ill people, all races. You know, we try to handle it in a way that's civil and acceptable to our customers.
Sir, would you like to speak on this item specifically, the proposal?
Well, that's what it is. I mean, I guess, I don't understand the deal with hate. So your proposal, is this the...
This is Councilmember Jimenez's proposal.
Okay. Is that the one where you're going to tax the gun owners and stuff like that?
No, sir.
No? Okay. I don't know if you've talked about that yet or not, but...
Thank you.
I just don't see it like he sees it. I'm not seeing it based on race or anything else. I'm seeing just a lot of violent people and angry people.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Back to the council. There's a motion from Councilmember Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that moves forward. We'll let staff figure out the timing, as the other one comes forward. Okay, we're on to item three, which is, I'm sorry, oh, yes, Councilmember Camus.
Yeah, sorry, Mayor. Before you discuss this item, I just want to be clear. As part of my insurance business, I do sell liability insurance, and I potentially could stand a benefit from laws being created along those lines, liability insurance or what have you. And I just want to ask our legal counsel to see if I should be recusing myself from this discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Camus. Kevin Fisher from the city attorney's office. Yes, we have reviewed the potential conflict and believe that there is a potential for you to have a conflict of interest, and the decision on this could impact your insurance business. So we do recommend that you recuse yourself from the discussion.
Okay, so you'll have to excuse me.
Okay.
Folks, sorry.
I know you're disappointed to miss another hour of meeting, but, all right, thank you, Councilmember. Okay.
Although I do know a lot about insurance.
He will, he'll offer estimates outside the door, if anybody's interested. All right, so this is on a proposal from several of us, Councilmember Peralas, Vice Mayor Jones, and myself, harm reduction approach, eliminating the gun violence subsidy. There is a memorandum from the city manager's office. Obviously, there are items in here that will require a substantial amount of work, and would need to go to prioritization. I wanted to note a couple important points of information. One is, I have been engaged in fundraising from private sector sources to help to fund a NEXUS study that could be conducted. We would need the city staff to be involved in essentially selecting the consultants, and obviously providing information the consultant would need to be able to do this study. Obviously, we need to do it with the county and others who could provide us a complete picture of information relating to the public costs that are borne for gun violence. And I've also been involved in talking to private sector folks, particularly law firms that are also willing to offer pro bono services as well. And so what I would ask is that undoubtedly much of this needs to go through prioritization, but that we move forward with the items that city manager offices believe are green, that can be readily, easily implemented, and then obviously come back to council with those, along with the selection of the consultant, and the support of the consultant's work that will be independently funded. So that would be my request. So we have several members of the public who'd like to speak. I just ask, Councilmember Peralas, Vice Mayor Jones, would you like to say, I know you've got a young one who may not be able to hang around the whole time, would you like to speak?
Yeah, actually, I'm going to do it.
Okay. Vice Mayor Jones?
We'll look away.
Okay. Great. So we'll go to the public first and then come back. Annette Ladowitz?
Hello.
I'm sorry, Annette, I couldn't quite read it. After Annette is Ed Kaufman and Julie Hennig. Welcome, Annette.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Good afternoon, Mayor Licardo, and councilmembers. My name is Annette Ladowitz, and I am a clinical social worker and a teacher. Mayor Licardo, councilman, damn it, we've met, and I just, I'm blocked.
It's Vice Mayor Jones, yes.
I'm sorry. I want to applaud you for the action that you are proposing, and that is to provide gun owners with insurance. I think it's a bold proposal, and I applaud you for making that. I think it's fantastic that you don't just say things like, "Let's all get together and be chummy," and, you know, all those great phrases, but that you're actually proposing an action plan. Mayor Licardo, councilmembers, you are our elected leaders. You serve as models for the community. I am so tired of the tepid responses that we get from politicians. "Let's all pray together, let's all hug each other, let's all be together," but they don't have a vision. They don't propose a plan. And I applaud you again, I know I've said that word, for proposing it. Insurance companies are not dummies. They're in a business to make money. They don't make money if they keep paying out claims. It's pretty simple. Any business understands that. No one wants to pay for mass shootings. If this is adopted, they will put their support behind us in keeping us safe. I hope that they will do background checks. I hope that they will support safe storage. I hope they will weed out those folks who should not have guns. Health insurers are the same. They don't make money if they are paying for colonos, well, colonos, wait, take that They don't make money when they have to pay out for, I was going to say coronaries, all of these kinds of things. They are promoting safe, good health, safety. They try to give lower prices for someone who is getting off of smoking. They promote good dieting. This is how they provide good business. Don't use it. Just pay your premiums.
Thank you, Annette.
That was it?
That was it, unfortunately.
Okay. I hope we have a unanimous approval. I hope you all get together and back this. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could squeeze that, it's too low for you, I can tell. And just raise it up, otherwise we won't get your voice on video. There you go, perfect. Thank you so much.
My name's Ed Kaufman. I'm a retired police officer, and I also have a federal firearms license, an '03 license. As you can imagine, this proposal is going to affect me tremendously. It's going to cost me a lot, and, you know, I'm obviously against it. I have insurance on all my firearms. I do not have insurance that you're proposing, because no one's ever proposed something like that before, and I'm not sure it's insurable. I'm not sure my insurance company would insure me on something like that. But I had a whole list of issues I wanted to talk about, but I just want to point out a couple of things. This is the Federal Registry on Firearms. All the federal laws are contained in here. This is a State Registry on Firearms. All state laws are considered, are in here. In this state law booklet, California has 44 pages. Texas has 12. Ohio has eight. And I only point that out is because those three states were the three states that were affected by the last shootings. So no matter what you do with regards to firearms legislation, people that have evil intent are not going to pay attention to you. And you're going to make innocent, law-abiding citizens, and I follow the law, the letter of the law. If you make it the law, I'll follow it. But I'll also contribute to campaigns to defeat you guys for the next elections, because I think it's unfair. It's unfair to punish people that obey the law for people that don't. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Julie Hennig? After Julie is Christine Johnson, or Christina Johnson? And Keone Murphy? Okay, I'll keep calling. Jeff Clapotz? Oh, hi.
Call him or just announce it?
Oh, come on up. Yeah, if you've heard your name, come on up. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, whoever gets there first can have it, and we'll hear everyone, don't worry.
Good afternoon, mayor and councilmembers. I am here on behalf of Assemblymember Ash Colra today to share a statement on the memo that was proposed. Assemblymember Colra commends Mayor Licardo, Vice Mayor Jones, Councilmember Peralas, and the city of San Jose for moving forward on protecting our residents from gun violence during a time when our federal government has long hesitated on taking measures needed to protect our children, our families, and our community. Although Assemblymember Colra has not had the opportunity to fully evaluate the various proposals outlined in the memo, he supports the directions many of them take in addressing our current crisis. As a state assembly representative, he will be available for any technical assistance or support as the city moves forward in ensuring San Jose establishes a gun violence and harm reduction policy. The state of California has been active in moving forward legislation that protects Californians from gun violence, and it makes us confident to know that we have a city supporting the movement by initiating discussions on gun violence prevention policies. Thank you.
Thank you. And please thank Assemblymember Colra for us as well. Welcome, sir. Squeeze it and raise it. Good to see you, Keone.
Samari.
Yeah, great, yeah.
My name is Keone Murphy, and I'm a resident of San Jose. I am opposed to this tax and any incremental taxes, including taxes on guns, bullets, cigarettes, and gasoline. Gun violence is wrong. We all know that. Nothing's going to change that, and it will forever be wrong. But it's a societal problem. What I see, and I know it hasn't all been flushed out, is I see an opportunity to tax law-abiding gun owners to create a pool of money to pay for the violence that has happened. That's not the best way to do it. It truly is a societal problem. Case in point, the most recent shooting, the shooter in Philadelphia, not only was not supposed to have guns, but had already been charged, tried, and convicted of being a felon with a gun before. So he truly is a repeat offender. I don't know that you're, that people not supposed to have guns, or that do have guns, are going to participate in the tax anyway. I don't know how that would work. I see this as nothing more than an undue burden on law-abiding gun owners to exercise their Second Amendment rights. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Julie Hennig? Followed by, after Julie is Jeff, I believe it's Clapotz? Welcome.
Hello. I'm here in favor of requiring this kind of liability gun insurance for ownership of a gun. I know that I would feel safer knowing that any neighbors who own guns are being encouraged by gun insurance. by gun insurance to keep their guns safely locked in a safe or with gun locks, and with ammunition stored safely and separately from their guns. I see this proposal as being similar to insurance on car liability, and I'm certain that years ago, there were voices saying that car insurance was an idea that would never work and unfairly targeted car owners. Car insurance isn't perfect, but it does help in many circumstances of accidental liability due to ownership of a car or in theft of a car, for example. We can do the same with gun ownership. I hope you will decide in favor of this proposal to protect the people of San Jose, and because it can show the rest of our state and the nation that gun insurance can be a part of the overall toolkit that can be used to reduce gun violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff from Saratoga, I'm sorry, I couldn't read your last name.
Klepotz.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. My apologies. And after Jeff is Dave Trussler.
Honorable mayor, members of council, and staff, my name's Jeff Klepotz. I'm from Saratoga, and the reason I'm here is because of the fact that if this idea catches on here, we'll probably have the same thing in Saratoga. I believe the proposed tax will inhibit the ability of citizens to own a firearm because it puts an additional undue burden on them. And the thing of it is, is that we really don't want to do that because of the fact that unarmed citizens make easy victims. Allow me to illustrate. When we take a look at the recent three shootings in Gilroy, El Paso, and Dayton, news accounts say that approximately 3,000 people fled or were shot or wounded. Of those 3,000 people, only one person carried a gun. In these jurisdictions that allow for concealed carry, 5% to 10% typically would carry. There should have been 150 to 300 people carrying a firearm that could have responded to the shooters. We have a gun control problem. Why do I say that? Gilroy, frisk entrance, had a frisked entrance gun-free zone. El Paso, that while Walmart was allowed carry, the Ciel Vista Mall said no, and that has a tendency to tell, have people say that they don't want to carry. And Dayton, where a lot of nightclubs, and they do not allow carry. Now, we can tell from the news that most victims of crime are unarmed. You can just sit and listen to the news. There are few people that are victims of violent crime are armed, and seldom to never do we ever hear of an armed victim. Because of the above, I encourage you to stop this gun control measure and promote more people to carry.
Thank you, sir. Dave Trussler? Followed by Steve Kwan?
Good afternoon. I think, as many of you know, I'm also, among other things, a firearms instructor, and I also look at city budgets. I want something that works. I wish this could work, but the data simply doesn't support it. What would work is to actually enact things that have done, have happened in five other states where straw purchases are illegal. Only nine out of over 112,000 cases were prosecuted because it's a federal crime. But in Pennsylvania, they went after four, over 427 people. We should be doing that in California. It's not the good guys like me and some of the other gun owners in this room, it's the bad guys and the people that enable them. There are lots of other things, and speaking to the earlier proposal by Mr. Menes, hallelujah, we really need to be working together. And I do spend a lot of time with so-called at-risk youth. I also distribute something that unfortunately the San Jose Police Department is not, and these are free gun locks. I have a bunch of them if anybody wants them. We all should be practicing safe storage. It's not what's in this proposal that troubles me so much, it is what is not in there. I can't find really anything that's going to work. And when I look over, as I hope you can see in this flyer, some of the things I participated in, the mayor's gang force and so forth and so on, I don't see anything that's happening in those areas, and we are missing opportunities, and that is what troubles me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kwan? Followed by someone who didn't write their name, but said they want to speak on gun control. Please come forward.
Yes, my name's Steve Kwan. Mr. Mayor and members of the committee, I think that this proposal is misguided, because what it does is it targets people who own firearms as a class, and it's like you're making them responsible for lawless people who commit crimes when you should instead of looking at firearms owners as a class, you should look at the perpetrator and ascribe the responsibility of heinous gun violence to that person, such as the one in Gilroy. I think basically the crux of this problem is a mental health problem. If you look at the history here in Santa Clara County, we used to have Agnew State Hospital. It was over 100 years old and was closed. Okay? So where are these people now who would have been cared for at the state hospital system? Well, I go down Monterey Road, and I see all these tents coming up on the railroad bed of Union Pacific, and I think that's going to be a bigger problem, because every day when I go by there, it seems to get larger and larger. So instead of focusing on gun owners as a class and ascribing these heinous acts of gun violence to gun owners themselves, we should address the issue that I think is most important, which is mental health. The Aurora, Colorado shooter, the one who shot at the movie theater, he was on psychotropic drugs when he was a kid or when he was a juvenile. When he became an adult, he went away, his mother, who was a nurse, couldn't supervise him, and so he stopped taking his drugs. And consequently, this led to the theater shooting in Aurora, Colorado. Definitely a mental health problem, and I think that we should focus more on that matter rather than demonizing gun owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, sir. And after our next speaker is Sean Manala.
I was following him unnamed. My name's David.
Go ahead.
So I'm with these guys a lot. I know somebody said insurance works for cars. It really doesn't, because we all have uninsured insurance, for those who aren't insured. But, you know, just over an hour ago, my employees were attacked right in front of the business by a guy who was on drugs. This is not a gun problem, it's a violence problem. And that's what people can't separate. It's a violence problem. There's mentally ill people, there's an awful lot of violence, and it's, it is the policies that are coming through California and through this office that are proliferating that violence. It's the reduction in police, it's emasculating the police, and not allowing them to do their job. It's absurd. I see this every single day. This is not a gun problem. It's a violence problem. And until somebody gets that in their head, you guys are not going to get anywhere with all the laws that you pass, other than creating a new drug war, which we failed with that as well. But now you're going to be taking law-abiding citizens and making them into criminals. And that's exactly where you'll be going with it, which is not a good place, because these are good people, taxpayers, people who are responsible, who train all the time and know what they're doing. And if they were armed at the Garlic Festival or anywhere else, then yeah, they could do something about it, people like me. They're out there, everywhere.
Thank you. Welcome, sir. After Sean is David, and then, and Rosen Swag, and forgive me, and I always mispronounce your name. Yes. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mayor Licardo and members. My name is Sean Manala with the Office of Senator Wykowski, and I'm here today in support of the gun violence subsidy proposal in front of you. As Gilroy, our experiences in Gilroy, Poway, San Bernardino, and Isla Vista have shown, California is not immune from gun violence. We have some of the toughest laws in the books, and I have a list of legislation just introduced between 2019 and 2016 for your view, if you were interested. Things including a ban on assault weapons, an extension of waiting periods, we give law enforcement discretion to deny a license to carry a concealed weapon, and we have other restrictions on firearms and ammunition purchases. These obviously do not stop all of the violence. The Giffords Law Center, to prevent gun violence, gave California an A rating recently, because we have one of the lowest gun death rates per capita among the 50 states, despite us being the second to Texas in the raw number of firearms-related deaths in the states. California has not been afraid to take action, however, these events still occur pretty regularly. This measure provides a necessary step in recognizing and identifying this crisis as a public health crisis, and gun violence is expensive to the public, in its emotional toll and financial cost. This may not be the solution, but it may be part of the larger solution to ensure that the gun violence is reduced, and it's a new and innovative approach that we eagerly support. We're looking forward to working with you, all of you, in the future, and I yield back the best of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Please thank Senator Wykowski as well. Thank you. David? A different David, I think, without a last name. All right, we'll move on to Ann. Welcome, Ann.
Mayor Licardo, Vice Mayor Camus, and I'm heartened to see more than just the Rules Committee here today. This is an important issue. It's one that's very personal to me. I never met my paternal grandfather because he committed suicide by gun four years before I was born. And just recently, Kayla Salazar was one of the three victims, and her aunt, Katiuska Pimentel, is a friend of mine. Kayla died one week short of her 14th birthday, and I saw Mayor Licardo when we celebrated her birthday. I have a bracelet here that I made at the birthday party to remember her. I commend you, Mayor Licardo, for thinking outside of the box and proposing something new. California is one of the 17 states that has gun violence restraining orders. I'm working to make that better known. I think that's one step. Moms Demand Action has a Get Smart program for parents to inquire about guns. But I think another step is getting the insurance. And just as with car insurance, if you're a safe gun owner, you're going to have a lower rate, I am convinced, than if you leave them out. I mean, this is partly instructing people who are gun owners to do a better job. I urge you to support this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Sarah? Welcome.
Hi. I hadn't prepared anything to say, but I just kind of wanted to respond to some of the things that I've heard today. I do believe that we have a mental health problem in the city and in the country in general, and that, but I feel like that is something that needs to be dealt with, you know, in and of itself, it's a separate issue. And while this is not a deterrent necessarily for gun violence, but it, like cigarette taxes, I think that it will provide money for public cost of gun violence. And I do believe that gun owners, many of whom block all common sense gun laws, should be held, should be helping to bear the cost of this. And lastly, I just wanted to commend you for putting this forth.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming forward to speak. I know that Councilmember Peralas is here, and Jorge has been very patient, and so I'm going to allow Councilmember Peralas to speak, just in case Jorge gets impatient.
Thank you, mayor. Maybe I should have taken your advice. He is due for a nap. So I'll do my best to be brief, as my colleagues know, that's tough for me. So, well, first off, I want to thank community members that came out today. This is the beginning of a conversation. I thank mayor and vice mayor for signing onto this memo as well. You know, I want to give a little context first. So I think from what I heard too, and what I hear sort of out in the community, I think some of the things are true, and in fact, what people may say on either side of the coin here is true. This absolutely is a societal problem. I think it's the culture of a society. And if anybody thinks that we're doing anything other than trying to change that culture, then you're wrong. We are. We're trying to change the culture of this society that has put us in this predicament. And the other thing is, it is a violence problem, absolutely. No doubt about it. But they are not separate issues. They go together, and to believe that we could somehow only solve the issue that we see with mass shootings by addressing violence but not addressing the tool, the most commonly used tool that people are using to carry out these acts of mass violence, is naive. And so, you know, and I think what we have here in front of us is an opportunity to do so. I was personally proud to be able to start this conversation and sign onto this memo. I think I was maybe eight years old when I first shot a gun. I grew up in a family of hunters, my grandfather hunting all over the valley here, Los Baños, Albezo, and grew up, you know, getting my hunter safety course when I was maybe 12, you know, and out there shooting rifles, shotguns since. And, you know, I intend fully to take my son and teach him how to shoot. I've taken my wife to the gun range. I own four guns in my house right now. Very proud of the fact that, right, that I grew up, and I enjoy the sport itself of, you know, to this day. And so I also served eight years as a full-time San Jose police officer and still currently serve as a reserve officer. So I have the opportunity to carry a concealed weapon, which I appreciate. And certainly, part of the reason why I have, you know, taken my wife to the gun range is because I also appreciate having a sense of extra security within the house that we live in, right here in downtown San Jose. That's the number of one individual said, right, that experiences, all that you may experience in a downtown urban environment. And at the same time, I'm not bullheaded enough to say that common sense gun regulations could not help this cause. And I would be more than proud, as I was previously, to help author safe storage of firearms, because I was already doing so in my own house, because most guns in a house are actually used to either self-inflict wounds or kill accidentally, people get killed within their own house with their own guns, more than a perpetrator coming into your house and harming you. So I was more than happy and grew up in a household where there was always a safe and always locks on our guns. And then more than happy to explore, what I would agree is a bit of a stretch, certainly. Insurance on a gun, it's, you know, been kicked around lightly before. We haven't seen a mayor, though, I think, you know, try to push and propose the actual policy to come forward. But I recognize it's a stretch, which is why I was, you know, even more excited to look at sort of this fee to fund a public pool to address the gun violence, because I honestly think that may be a direction that we end up having to go. I think it's great to start the process, to see how far we can get, and maybe we can accomplish some form of insurance for gun owners. But more importantly, we are already seeing taxpayers cover the toll of what it takes to provide safety to our community because of a few individuals out there in these mass shootings and their free access to the mass number of guns to be able to do so. And we've heard it, a number of regulations, taxes and stuff that gets imposed on a lot of areas where we see inflicting, whether it's pain suffering or a financial loss to our community, like seat belts in a car, right? Or car insurance itself, as we pointed out, extra taxes on things like cigarettes, or banning cigarette usage in airplanes or restaurants, right? Because we understand that the impact that they have on the rest of the society. And, you know, I think in this same sense, I would not lose my guns. We're not talking about taking anybody's guns. I would still have the opportunity to take my son out shooting and feel maybe comfortable within my own house. But I also could know that we, as policymakers, can begin to shift that culture of our society that unfortunately is stuck in wanting to have absolutely no common sense regulations on the sale, the use, the ownership of firearms. And so I think, you know, I think this is but a start. I absolutely think, in fact, it goes hand in hand with the last item from Councilmember Jimenez in regards to hate. And I would agree, when we say hate, we also mean violence, right? Those are sort of synonymous. And so we are talking about all of the same things here, and my hope would be that more gun owners, right, would also speak up and recognize that these are sensible regulations, and that at the end of the day, if it's a bit of, at most, a financial burden on your and that at the end of the day, if it's a bit of, at most, a financial burden on you, which is all this would be for me, an extra step and a financial burden. And I'm fairly certain, you know, individuals like my constituent, Dave Treslow, right, and other individuals, would not lose their guns, right? They'd have an opportunity to do so, but they'd also have an opportunity to help move along some common sense legislation. So appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I hope the committee can move forward with what both the city manager's office has proposed, that we can sort of greenlight, and then the opportunity to move forward for a conversation and priority setting.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember, and thank you, Jorge. Vice Mayor Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that we can debate, and there's a discussion on what the causes are, but one of the things that we all know that's perfectly clear is there's a social cost to gun violence. And we're talking about guns. I know that the conversation around mental health and violence, violent movies and violent cultures come up, but if you look at other industrialized countries, they have mental health issues. Violent American movies are one of our biggest exports to other countries, so they see violent movies as well. The young men play violent video games in other countries. What's the one difference between the United States and those other countries? It's guns. It's access to guns. That's irrefutable. One of the things that I'm really supportive of this proposal is that we require homeowners to be responsible for the social cost of their, you know, harm to other people, if they don't, if they have a hazard on their property that inflicts some type of damage, we require them to have insurance. We do the exact same thing for people who own automobiles. We have a precedent of having a social cost that we inflict on others that we have to compensate for, and we do not want to have the rest of society pick up the cost and the burden of our negligence or areas where we aren't responsible. So we're trying to redefine what it means to be a responsible gun owner, and what that means is if you have safe storage of your gun, it means that you have potentially insurance on your gun, if it means other actions that you need to take to be considered a responsible gun owner. So that's what we're really trying to accomplish, is really redefining what that means, and I think this initiative and this proposal goes a long way to do that. It's not a panacea. We're not going to solve gun violence with this proposal, but it's truly a concrete action to move forward with addressing the gun violence problem in our community and in our country. So I want to ask the city manager, in terms of your green light, yellow light, how you're proposing that we move forward with this, our memo.
Sure. So outlined in the forum, we've identified, I wouldn't say a majority, but several of the items that would be yellow lit, as well as a few different items that we could offer a green light and start working on, such as testing and developing proposed ballot measures, as well as a number of the efforts around working with our state delegation in Sacramento and our federal delegation in Washington, D.C. So we would start that. I believe what the administration heard at the very beginning by councilmember, or Mayor Licardo, sorry, was the possibility of moving forward with feasibility study or the Nexus study if funding were available, and that is something that the administration would be able to greenlight and kind of manage that process, you know, through the RFP as well as development of that scope. So if the Rules Committee is in favor of that, that is something the administration can move forward with.
Great. So I would like to make a motion to move forward with our memo from the mayor, councilmember Paralis, and myself, with the direction from the city manager's office in terms of moving forward with the green light and yellow light items.
Thank you. And to be clear, in addition, the green and yellow would include also the Nexus study, which would become green, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And the other items would go to prioritization, a priority study. Okay. Great. Thank you. I appreciate those who came out to speak. I just want to really clarify what the goals are of this initiative, as I view it, because I know there's sometimes a belief that things are supposed to be accomplishing things that they're not, and that tends to create a lot of straw man arguments and sort of misleads folks in various ways. So let me just be really clear. There are two goals here. One is reducing harm from firearm violence, and the second is to more fairly allocate the cost of gun violence. And we believe in lots of context. I think economists pretty widely agree that when you do fairly allocate the cost of an activity, that is one way to actually reduce the harm. That's the entire basis for insurance. That is what free market economists have been believing for a long time. And while certainly the Second Amendment protects the right of all to bear arms, or at least nearly all of us, with our exclusions, I think they're recognized in the law, the Second Amendment does not require the public to subsidize an individual's choice of bearing arms, and I think that's awfully important. In the state of California, that subsidy is estimated to be $1.4 billion for the public cost responding to gun violence in various ways. And the question was asked by several folks in the public, you know, why burden gun owners in this way? I think we would all agree that law-abiding gun owners aren't, quote unquote, "the problem." But we also live in a country where between 200 and 300,000 guns are stolen every year, quite often from law-abiding gun owners. And you can imagine if a gun is stolen, it's highly probable it's going to be used in crime subsequently and violence. We live in a country with 4.6 million children who live in a household where a gun is loaded and unlocked. About 500 deaths result from accidental use of firearms, 17,000 injuries every year. So there are a lot of ways we can certainly improve in safety, just purely just looking at what happens accidentally with guns, and there are measures that can be taken with the encouragement of insurance, that might be something as simple as gun safety classes. And as technology improves in various ways, we're seeing a lot of biometric-sensitive technology, for example, that make, provide for trigger locks unless the owner is actually the one holding the gun, things like that. You can imagine technological improvements come along that insurance companies may try to incentivize folks to utilize, just as they incentivize drivers to use airbags. So that's why law-abiding gun owners might be expected to bear this cost. The next question is, well, it seems to be raised, is what about crooks? We know they're not going to pay insurance, they're not going to pay fee. I think Jorge seems to feel strongly that way as well. But as with driving uninsured, there is a vehicle coprovision that provides that's a misdemeanor and there are sanctions for that. And the tool that this gives law enforcement when finding a gun in plain view or after a consent search or with a valid Fourth Amendment warrant, that obviously a gun found that's not insured can then lead to criminal liability. So that is the point here. I know that David Treslow recommended we instead more actively prosecute straw purchasers. David, come back in a few weeks. We've got an ordinance that, as you know, will strengthen our, the evidence that we'll be able to use to ensure that straw purchasers are not buying guns. I hope you'll support that. I know that's come through the process and coming back to council, I think, next month. We, I think, all would acknowledge that the insurance markets may or may not be well-developed at this point to provide insurance. That's why there is a fee option here, and it provides us a means to incentivize the market in ways, particularly if other cities and states join in, and there seems to be a significant amount of interest in Sacramento in this, based on my conversation. So I am hopeful that this won't be a one-city show, and I'm grateful for the presence of representatives from Senator Wykowski and Assemblymember Colora's office. They and others have reached out to me to say, how can we help? And I'm grateful for that. Okay. The comments?
Do you want to take the public comment?
Oh, yes, a card was just submitted. Welcome.
I wasn't planning on speaking, but after hearing some of these folks talk about their rights as gun owners, I feel compelled, as a non-gun owner and someone who grew up without guns in my family, the notion that we should have more people with guns just in case someone crazy person shows up with a gun is outrageous to me and uncomfortable that I should have to live in a society with people walking around with concealed weapons. I just find that outrageous. So I applaud any efforts that you, I don't know what the solution is, but anything that, you know, will make it safer for the rest of us who don't have guns and don't really want to be walking around in society with guns, I applaud your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. So the way, the way that I see that, see this, much like Councilmember Paralis, I am a gun owner. I actually have my firearm safety certificate with me. We have two safes, one of which is very large and was very expensive, in which to store our guns. I think there are common sense laws, one of which we have already in San Jose, which is a safe storage law. We got our gun safe before the safe storage law, I just want to be clear, because it made sense. We have now teenagers in our house, and I don't want them to have access to weapons that they could accidentally misuse and hurt themselves or someone else. I am intrigued by, by the ideas that my colleagues have put forward, and I want to hear more. I think big problems require many solutions. There's never just one solution to a big problem. So I agree, we have a societal problem. I agree that we have mental illness problem. I agree that we have a drug addiction problem. But instead of saying, well, instead of doing this thing, we should do that thing, I think it's more of a yes-and situation, where we are going to have to do a lot of things. And so I seconded the motion because I would like to hear more from staff to get these ideas more fleshed out. And I want to thank my colleagues for bringing these ideas forward. I hope that it will spark discussions in other localities, since we are not seeing action at the federal level where it rightfully should be and where we know the vast majority of Americans support common sense gun solutions. Yeah, so I'm happy to support it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. So also agree, Councilmember Davis, with all what you said about behavioral health and the social problem and the mental health issues, this is all underlying, and the reasons why people participate in mass shootings or have misuse of guns. I appreciate this effort. I want to learn a little more about this. I've been absolutely supportive in the past when we had our safe storage. I supported that from the beginning. I've also supported the videotaping purchases to prevent straw buyers. So, and that's one of my questions that I have. Where are we with that process? Because I'm afraid we haven't finished one thing, and now we're beginning with something else.
Do you know when that ordinance, I believe it's coming back in the second or third week in September, I'm looking at Paul. Yes, so second or third week?
Yeah, I think the second reading is sometime in September. And again, a majority of this is being set to priority setting, so not a lot of the work would start. We would be mostly in the mood of, mode of information gathering and small bits of analytical work.
Okay, thank you. I also have a question about how this would actually work and who it would help. So if we take, for instance, the Gilroy incident, assuming that it wasn't an assault rifle and it was a legal gun that was used, because they say this is geared more, it's not very victim-focused, I feel it's more focused on this resources, and I know that's one of the goals that you talked about, Mayor. So I'm wondering if anybody could take me through, like, who, how would this, who would this insurance benefit in the end? Whether it's accidental or intentional acts, because I believe intentional acts are never really covered.
Not never.
How would that work?
Yeah, so first, it would cover accidental acts, to be clear, and we already do have insurance policies available to homeowners to cover accidental use of firearms, and in that case, a victim could recover from that insurance company, just like a victim of an auto accident could recover. Intentional acts of the insured are, bedrock principle, are not covered. On the other hand, intentional acts of third parties may be insurable. In fact, we know they're insurable. We know, for example, talked to several representatives of insurance companies, told me that there are bars and nightclubs that purchase now active shooter insurance to protect, unfortunately, yes, this exists, to protect their patrons because of their fear of someone coming in with a gun into their, into their premises. So that is an intentional act of a third party for which you can buy insurance. So, so yes, it would protect victims, obviously, in the case where you have insurance. On the other hand, where it's a fee, and we expect probably for some period of time, this may be a fee-based ordinance until all the insurance issues get resolved, we know that there are, there are many public costs of firearm violence, many of which are involved services directly provided to victims, that is, of course, emergency medical care, ER care, et cetera. And sadly, what we know with, for example, the Victims of Crime Program, the state funding for things like funeral services. I don't believe those should be borne by the taxpayers. I believe those should be borne by those who choose to take on this risk of having a gun. And right now, taxpayers who may have no desire to own guns have to subsidize gun ownership. So yes, there are direct dollars that directly benefit victims. In other cases, this is a matter simply of shifting the cost burden from those who are making choices to those who are simply being burdened by those choices.
Got it. So I'm not in a brown act with you, Mayor, and so I have a brown act with my neighbor as far as we got into a conversation. So we're brown acted, and I see Andres is here. And we, Andres, would you come forward? Because I think Maya had shared with me that your team, and I hate to put you in this place, but my, she shared with me that your team spent some time talking to some insurance companies, and I think even the NRA themselves, who I thought there wasn't an insurance, like, that it wasn't like a mass shooting insurance, and that having these kinds of insurances would actually increase businesses, business for the NRA. Could you speak a little bit more about that and straighten out anything that I might have said that misquoted May on?
Sure, through the chair. I just want to preface that I'm not here speaking on behalf of the councilmember. Just basically, I'm going to repeat the research that we've done and the conversation we've had with insurance companies. Your run-of-the-mill, traditional insurance companies that provide, like State Farm, whether they provide homeowners' insurance, were hesitant and staying away, saying that any sort of third-party action is something that they aren't interested in even looking at. And those were the concerns that they shared. After that, and seeing that it was kind of difficult to find somebody who's willing to go in all the way on providing insurance for third parties, we contacted more specialty boutique, high-risk insurance companies. One of them was like a prime out of Utah, and they specialize in these firearms insurance, that type of stuff. They said that they would primarily focus on the gun owner themselves, any sort of legal costs they might incur, and that was standard in the industry, according to them. In conversations with Lockton Affinity, the NRA insurance provider, they mentioned that they're in the process of building an insurance policy as we speak, and that, you know, stay tuned, that they're going to have something ready to go. The fellow actually even mentioned, we're hearing this and we're very excited. And so I asked him, hey, what's the deal? How do you get access to the insurance? Well, you have to be an NRA member, and then you can purchase our insurance. And so they were the only ones who were really willing to say, yep, we will have a product that's going to go ahead and cover exactly what you're talking about. So that was the research that we did.
Thank you. That's the piece I was missing, that you needed to be an NRA member in order to have access. access to that high level of insurance. So for me, that was something that, yes, please, thank you, take a seat. I apologize for calling you so spontaneously. And of course, recognizing that you're not speaking on behalf of councilmember Asparza. So that, those are the pieces for me that really caught my ear. I thought, I'm not sure if we are going to inadvertently increase membership for the NRA, since there might be the, the only insurance in town, if you will. But I, you know, I'll support this to move forward so we can have further discussions about it. I'm just, I'm just letting everyone know right up front that I'm just a little nervous or unsure how this would be the most effective, if it is the most effective strategy for harm reduction. Of course, I always see education as the most effective tool, but, you know, we could also debate that as well. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you. I just think it's important to correct the record. NRA doesn't currently offer this insurance. They offer, as I understand it, on their website, five different insurance products. And David's acknowledging not this insurance that is articulated by this. Currently, any homeowner, at least under my policy and several policy we called, do provide coverage for accidental firearm discharge that's available today. In some cases, it's baked in. In some cases, you can purchase a rider. The council has not yet defined what the scope of the liability insurance would be. Obviously, that is to be determined, and we may ultimately simply decide that accidental coverage would be all that would be required. It may be the case that we would include a mandate with the expectation that the market may respond. That is, we live in Silicon Valley where there is market disruption, that's the nature of this valley, because new entrants come into an industry and decide they have a better way of doing things. And so there's an opportunity, certainly, to encourage the development of an insurance market that may in fact help to incentivize gun owners to be safer. And I'd also, I think I have to bring this intention, I've had some conversations with the city attorney, because councilmember Asparza and I did speak before my memorandum was filed. And she, I learned from Damian Trujillo at NBC before, I guess it was about an hour before we filed this memo, that he believed that councilmember Asparza had talked to me already about this, and that she had urged me to include hate crimes provisions in this, in this memorandum. And subsequently, that was after he interviewed her, of course. He then reported that day, this was last Thursday, quote, "Asparza said she spoke with Liccardo last Friday about establishing some sort of gun ordinance, and she had suggested hate crime provisions be a part of it," unquote. The concern I have is that there is probably a Brown Act violation here, and so I wanted to raise that, as I was advised by the city attorney now, so that way it can be clearly vetted. And I don't know, Kevin, if you want to, at this point, weigh in or simply we just move on?
I think you've summed it up pretty well, Mayor.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? All right, then, on the motion, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Then we're on to, I think, open government, and, I'm sorry, open forum, and Mr. Beekman.
In the many ways, people may feel government and local community are not doing enough. It is a relief to understand the state of California and local Bay Area governments and communities have already been very much, been working on the issues of gun violence, mental health, youth, and even women's studies issues over the past few years. With the state of California debate now, for a few years now, please don't forget at this time the importance that a simple focus given to the care and needs of local community mental health centers can really accomplish a lot. Again, I am very sorry for insensitivity of my words last week. I lost a very important balance in how I had been trying to very reasonably think about these issues we're talking about today and talk about them, and to then be able to talk about them in the public meeting, open forum. To finish up here, thank you again for the ideas of patience and forgiveness you've offered myself at this time, and for my recent mistakes. I am understanding how the ideas of moderation, yet determination, can be added to the list of things to work on in a time of mourning Santa Clara County is currently going through. I hope, to conclude, I hope everyone can look over my public record letter today that offers what I hope can be good ideas on the Measure T, public oversight appointment process, and that I also mention how the everyday public can help shape the future of Bay Area emergency preparedness with new SF card, a new SF card process. I don't want to hurt the good work that, the positive good work that I'm working towards at all. It's, there's something really hopeful about it, and I hope, I hope we can continue to, you will want to continue to work on its good things in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beekman. The meeting is adjourned.